Okay, bang a cap.
Call it a water, roll call please, Mr. Presente.
Mayor Reeves?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Tavishure?
Here.
Ms. Reeves?
Here.
Ms. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Ms. Dunia? And President Sturtevant?
Here.
I did receive a text message from Mr. Dunia, was feeling a little under the weather and didn't want to bring it into everybody else, so keep him in your thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is the season for us to not feel well at times. Wanted to provide a very quick update on some of the previous items that have been discussed. On the Pennsylvania DEP 567 recycling grant, which is valued up to $7,500 and has provided us, to us at no cost to the borough, which means that there's no matching dollars for us to participate. The DEP has assigned KRF Environmental to work with the borough and to prepare the final report. The work effort has been planned to focus on 60% of her effort is going to be towards the outreach to the businesses. 30% is residential outreach to increase our participation for recycling residentially. And 10% of it is going to be an educational outreach, which is a lesson plan that would be prepared for the elementary school. Her task to complete the grant would be data gathering. That's the process that we're under right now, and she's got a target date of the 16th of February 2015 to complete the data gathering. As part of the data gathering, what she's actually doing is reaching out to all the small businesses. Robin Henderson had provided a list, and it was very interesting to me to find out that there's just over 200 small businesses here in the borough that he's, for her to reach out to and to get an idea of what their recycling program consists of, and to educate the business owners on how to report their recycling numbers over to Delaware County Solid Waste, so that we would be able to obtain credits for their recycling efforts as a business. Her report is to be written mid-March, and her final submission is scheduled to be presented here to Borough Council here at the end of the first quarter. So 30th of March 2015, she'd be prepared to come and give us a final report. Scope of work has been submitted and approved by the DEP, so we are underway with the Recycling Technical Assistance Grant. Update on the preparation and acceptance of the Consolidated Collective Bargaining Agreement. We exchanged documents with the police officers in Eddystone here on the 3rd of December. The consolidated agreement is being reviewed both by the Labor Council for the Borough as well as the Labor Council for Lodge 27. I did put a call in to Ms. Kelly Sullivan, who represents the borough this afternoon. She had not gotten back to me at the time of the meeting, but the last time that we did spoke, she was very comfortable that the review process would be completed in early January. And I do have it on the agenda for action to be taken by council to accept the collective bargaining agreement our next meeting, which is January the 12th. If she does not get something to me by Wednesday or Thursday, we may have to table that action. I just want to give the members of council the opportunity, at least over the weekend, to review the collective bargaining agreement. I do stress that we're not changing any of the language in the collective bargaining agreement. What this exercise is, is simply to consolidate all of the year's worth of contracts into one document, so that we'd be able to have one document to reference, as opposed to going back year after year or cycle after cycle. Quick update on the memory of understanding with Chief Macheski. Both parties executed the agreement on the 23rd of December 2014. An executed copy was filed with the Lodge 27. We also have a copy that's been filed with the Legal Council for the Borough, and we've got a copy here on file at the Borough Office in case we do receive any requests for anyone to review that document. Is that correct, Mr. Presente? You've got that in a file somewhere?
Yes.
And as part of the MOU, Chief Macheski, there is a requirement that you submit your proposed work schedule to Borough Council for our review and acceptance. So if you could have your work schedule prepared for February 2015 for submittal to the Borough at next meeting. Once again, if you can email it to me like you did in January, and I'll just forward it to Borough Council, and this way you've got the weekend to review. Quick update on the fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant application. Council took action on the 23rd of December to approve the submittal of two projects. It was a signage improvement project. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gross, for coming forward with that recommendation.
Excuse me, I do have something else that I thought about adding.
Could not add anymore.
The clock.
You want to save it for?
Yeah, the clock in front of Lighthouse Hall. That was a $20,000 clock.
Bill's getting it, already working on it.
Oh, okay.
We'll get it, we'll get to that.
We're moving forward with that.
Okay, I just thought about that today.
Okay.
Read your next page.
Okay. One thing at a time, I just popped in my head.
Yeah, we took action on the 23rd of December. There's two projects that have been approved. It was the signage improvements, which would be the welcome signs to Eddystone, as well as to change out all the streetlights, and also to install an electronic board here in front of Borough Hall to announce upcoming events. And there was also a sewer rehabilitation project that was submitted to Catania for funding consideration. Catania sent an email earlier this week. He's prepared the grant application to be submitted to the Delaware County Office of Housing and Community Development. The estimated cost for the project, Catania estimates that the signage improvements project will be in the neighborhood of $44,000. And the sewer rehabilitation is just under $210,000. And both of those projects will be submitted for Community Development Block Grant consideration. Tim, Catania did mention in his email that he's waiting on some information from the borough.
Yeah, we have it together. The resolution, it just has to be printed a little bit before you use the computer.
Okay.
Could you have to sign that also?
I got to sign the resolution.
And then I'll take this stuff over and hand deliver it to County Council.
Okay.
But we have the group of publication.
And we need the minutes from the meeting.
And the resolutions, the one piece that I just sent off the computer, could you have to sign it also?
Okay.
We'll get that into the county before the week's over in front of it as well.
Okay. And then a last update on the old issue is the approval and the publication of the 2015 meeting minutes. And, you know, Tim, just wanted to bring to your attention that, you know, I'd like to set a goal that we can review and approve the previous month's meeting minutes at the next regular meeting. So the meeting that we have next week, January 2015, I'd like to be in a position to approve both the workshop meeting minutes as well as the regular meeting minutes at our February regular meeting. And then also to make the effort to get those minutes posted to our website immediately after approval by council. And as we briefly should discuss, making sure that we've included some follow-up and resolution of things that, you know, are brought to the council's concern or to council's attention. Public concerns and issues that, you know, come to us via our public forum section, any of the right-to-know requests, and, you know, anybody that reports an issue via our website. Council, any questions about some of the past items that have been discussed?
Good, great job.
New item discussion for 2015. What I would like to see is, I'd like to see our department heads, Dallas Waters with Code, Chief Macheski with Police, and either Andrew Walsh or a representative from the Fire Department, to be presenting those reports, the Code Enforcement Report, the Police Report, and the Fire Report each month. And Ed, you and I have discussed this previously, so as much as I do like to hear Mr. Presente presenting the reports, you know, if you can make the effort, since you do prepare them, to present to council the Police Report. And council, if there's any questions that you may have, I think it would be some good interaction between us and the chief, that as he presents the report, that we can get clarification about any questions that we may have. Also like to have council's consideration to the repair of the town clock. The clock was installed in County Year 2000, and you are absolutely correct, Ms. Gross. I did get the original quotation, even though it was not borough money.
Right.
That was expended. We did get a corporate donation. But the clock is, or was valued at $25,000 when it was installed. I stumbled upon a repair technician from Coastal Clock and Chimes. I invited the repair technician out to visit the site on the 2nd of January to give us a diagnosis for repair. And he is preparing a detailed estimate, which will be presented to council at next meeting, which itemizes the cost to repair and/or restore the clock. And when he took the face of the clock off, it was, I thought it would be a lot more complicated looking inside than it actually was. It's, the clock itself has a motor that runs it. However, all of the electronic controls are actually inside Lighthouse Hall. So the big money item is actually mounted on the wall inside the mechanical room at Lighthouse Hall. His initial diagnosis, and just to kind of give you a little preview of what we're going to see when he does give the estimate, is going to need a new motor. The new motor will make it run.
Sure.
The motor is estimated to be around between $500 and $750. I believe that is an installed price. That will get the arms moving.
Yeah, good. Sorry, but what was that amount?
Between $500 and $750 is what he verbally quoted. A few things that, you know, he had recommended. The lighting system that illuminates the clock at night is a fluorescent illumination system. The new clocks that come out have an LED lighting system. So I asked him to price the LED system for us. But it's going to be, you know, the way that I told him to prepare the estimate is prepare it like a menu, so that we can pick the things that we want and discard the things that we don't want. The other issue is that, you know, being essentially 15 years old, you know, the paint is starting to wear. So he had recommended potentially doing some paint work on it. And I do have behind Councilwoman Thompson the headers. These traditionally would have Eddystone written on the headers. And for whatever reason, we never had the inscription of Eddystone put on the headers. So when he was here to do his diagnostic work, I asked him to take the headers off. If you look at the back, you can see how the wood has started, the paint is starting to chip off the wood.
Yeah, it needs to be primed.
Andy Walsh has got us in touch with the gentleman down in Tennycombe that does all of the lettering on the fire trucks.
Right.
And he is going to come take a look at the headers.
Great.
See if he could strip them down, repaint them, and give us an estimate on lettering Eddystone out of the problem. So we will have additional information about the clock for next meeting. I was expecting to have the repair restoration estimate in hand for this evening. I will have to give him a little courtesy call tomorrow to remind him that I'm waiting on some information.
Can we, like, a couple of years, like about a year ago, I got in touch with a clock guy too, who would fix that. He said the same thing, it needs a motor and replacement. But then after that, for $500 a year, he can come and change the timeline twice a year and make sure everything was a little better.
He has a service contract as well, and it would be very similar to. I hate to throw out the quotes before I get the written paper, but it was $1,500 for three years, which would be $500 a year. I did not do my due diligence and internet research, but apparently several years ago, and Mr. Wilson could probably shed some light on this, is that we changed the rules about daylight savings time. It now occurs a little bit later in the spring and a little bit later in the fall.
Can't help you with that.
Earlier in the spring.
Earlier in the spring, later in the fall. The way that the computer program is set up, since this was done back in 2000, is it's only old rules for daylight savings time. So, you know, what he explained to me is, is that if you don't want to change the computer system for about a week or two weeks, it will be one hour off until the daylight savings time catches its own box. So that's, you know, my feeling is, is if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Councilwoman Gross, you want to give any feedback about the discussion you and I had about consideration of a new fire truck fund?
Yeah, also, I think the fire company's having their monthly meeting coming up, so once it goes to them, discussion, you know, they'll get back to me, pellied field. But I'm all agreement, you know, if the fire company sees fit to put it on municipal dot bid, that'd be great to get the ball rolling. Also, I know it was just a rough guess for Andy about what the total cost for a new fire truck would cost, because there are grants and all kinds of things out there. He was just giving a guestimate. So there is also something I did want to bring up, I've brought up before. A lot of other fire companies have an insurance that goes to replacement of equipment that is lost at a fire, a cocoa factory. Eddystone is probably one of the last ones in Delaware County that uses this company. And I'm going to ask Andy to have him do a PowerPoint demonstration. It goes after the insurance company, like, will we use equipment at the fire scene? If it's broken radios, hose and stuff, it's up to the fire company to replace that. As you know, a section of hose is hundreds of dollars, and equipment is thousands of dollars. And ergo, we pay for it. That's why the insurance company goes after the insured company to have a bid, or not a bid, to pay, help pay the cost of lost equipment. So the company and borough doesn't have to pay for it. So they put a claim in, they put a claim in, yeah. I forget if they have exact word for it.
Oh, the company?
Yeah, with the insurance company. And Tennycombe was kind enough to hand us what their ordinance was. All we had to do was change some wording.
You're familiar with it?
Our ordinance right here.
We did in Dorby, too.
Yeah, Dorby, a lot of people have.
You got to recognize them as your fire company, and then you have to give them the right to go after the, if homeowner has homeowner's insurance.
Right.
Anything lost or used during a fire.
Right, there's everything from axes to, you know, tools, that if stuff is broken. They don't go after the person itself, they go after the insurance company and stuff like that. But it would save the borough, you know, quite a bit of money, especially for equipment that gets broken and damaged severely.
The Tennycombe, because they use, we do it for car accidents, so if they use.
Yeah, they use it for everything. I'm going to have, do a PowerPoint.
What it is, is they, basically what it is, is the borough would have to make an ordinance to be able to have the fire company charge for everything they use.
Okay.
Or destroy.
Right.
Like, if they lay out 300 feet of hose, they charge extra now for a foot. And they go after the insurance companies, not the individual owners.
Right, well, anything that's broken too.
Do you have, you said you have a copy of the Tennycombe ordinance?
I have everything right here. Also, I'm going to have Andy have the man come do a PowerPoint demonstration to give us, you know, exactly everything we need to know why this is a good thing for not only us, but other communities, boroughs, townships have been doing it for years. I suppose we never talked about that. I know.
Well, basically, it was mainly they came up with it because of the, all the fires we've had down the cocoa factory. You get in there and your gear is rolling, and that's almost 500 hours for setting your boots, coat, pants.
And it can go back to two years.
The stuff don't come clean.
From fire scenes that we've been at, like from the.
I know, we do the grant for fire trucks.
Yeah.
Every year they go.
Yeah.
Yes, we have. We were in line last year for a truck and a, for some reason, we didn't get it. We were right at the top of the list there.
That's true, that, you have to give it to him by mistake, council.
Doing what he's getting this year?
They've done, yeah, we have a grant buyer that we pay to submit to Grange.
Yeah, the guy in Texas.
In Mikeville.
Yeah, we charged like $75, so what did?
We got a grant one time from, um, that is something, $5,000. I don't know what, I forget what. I mean, it was just for firing house costs, but it was only one time.
Council, I'm going to scan that information about the insurance and forward it to everybody. And if you could have Andy come and give a further explanation, or have the representative come give a further explanation.
Absolutely, would you?
I'll put it, I'll put it on the agenda for the presentation.
Okay.
On, for January 12th.
Well, I was going to say February, gives that guy plenty of time.
Okay.
You know, I told Andy I would ask him first, and he said, "How about February?" I'm like, "Sure." You know, gives him, so I'll let him know we agree that would be a good thing, okay.
Yeah, just so that you understand the process with the ordinances, is if we move forward and we prepare the ordinance, Mr. Duffy will have to prepare the ordinance and have to be advertised for 30 days?
No, it goes in, I think it goes in the paper actually twice. It just has to be, like, I think like three weeks in advance of the.
So, so we're looking probably at March, March meeting, too.
Would you like me to see if I can get Andy here on the 12th? And then have the company come, if you can't come, next week.
Just depends on how quickly you want to make it happen.
Well, yeah, okay, so I'll invite Andy.
If you can invite Andy and see if you can get the gentleman to give a presentation, we'll make room for him on the 12th.
Okay.
If the 12th doesn't work, we'll do the February meeting.
Okay, thanks.
But what I'd like council to do is to consider the creation of a new fire truck fund. We do have a 1979 Han custom pumper that is currently out of service, what I called mothballed. And since it's a surplus asset, we could sell it on munisabid.com. The only thing that we would need is, is to have some photos and some specifications written up. And it'd be nice if we would at least get an estimated value. I know we talked about scrap value, using that as kind of the base number. Since this is a 1979, it is a classic fire truck. So, you know, it does have some collector interest, I'm sure. And from, in discussions with Andy Walsh, since Han is out of business.
Out of business.
It's out of business about 20 years.
Yeah.
So it's got, it's got some.
Yeah.
It's got some interest there as well, so.
I think it'll track for a minute, but what are we supposed to go through, all the stuff that we had, the surplus that we had?
It was on the goals for 2014. Can't do everything. We did a lot.
We did a lot.
But this would be, you know, at least what this will do is it'll get us familiar with munisabid.com.
Right.
You know, it would be taking whatever proceeds come out of that sale and putting it right into a separate account that's earmarked as the new fire truck fund. It would also give the fire company the opportunity, is if you do certain fundraisers and you want to divert certain monies to the fund, you know, we can specifically put that money into the fire truck fund, you know, understanding that, you know, fire trucks can run you in excess of a half a million dollars. So it's something we have to plan carefully and save for a little while before it can happen. But it also gives us the matching dollars if we, you know, can go after some grant opportunities and know that we've got that matching dollar in the bank. So I will ask council to take action at next meeting to authorize the sale of the 1979 Han custom pumper on munisabid.com.
As you, as you said, there probably is some collector interest on some of that. There are, just as there are people that collect antique cars, there are people that collect trucks. And I mean, that's old enough that they would be interested in that. There's, there used to be a truck show that was held up near Norristown every year. So there are people actually have these big full-size trucks, and they store them in warehouses and things. And if the, if that company's been out of business for 20 years, there might even be parts on the truck that are sold after parts. So in addition to munisabid, we might want to look into some truck collector websites and things like that. If, when, if when you get the specs on it, if you want me to, I'll try doing a little research and see.
I haven't even contacted munisabid.com yet, so I do have to find out what their rules are. You know, I don't know if they have an exclusive, you know, if you go and you advertise something on their site, whether you have to exclusively sell with them, or whether they allow you to, you know, try to put the item for sale on multiple sites. I did go through to the munisabid's site, and, you know, you could buy anything from a, from a movie projector screen.
Right.
To cyclone fence.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it was everything that was on there, all of the seized personal police, or personal cars that have been repossessed or seized by the police. Old police cars were on there, it's plows and salt spreaders and. But what it gives you is it gives you national, it gives you national exposure. And, you know, it's amazing that, you know, somebody from Texas may pick up the fire truck and.
They have, they have gone from, they have fixed fire trucks up and driven them back to Wisconsin, a big parade. They have done that in the past, absolutely.
Next item is review of the license and permit fee schedule for code-related items. Dallas has been requested to review all of our current fees to obtain, whether it be a license or a permit from the borough. Take what we charge and compare that to our surrounding municipalities. And I was asking him to provide us a recommendation of any fee increases at our regular meeting on the 12th of January. So Dave is Chair of the Code and Zoning, if you can reach out to Dallas, see where he's at with this. And I'll, I'll reach out with Joe Presente and see how quickly he would like us to take action on this, because I know that he based some of our 2015 budget on, on some increases to our fees for permits and licenses.
When, when they do that, can something also be included to describe if there's any fee schedule that's dependent on a rate or something? If it's, if a fee is being charged as a percentage of a job, can that be spelled out too? So that people, when they're applying for fees, know, they should be able to calculate in advance what the permit fee is going to be.
I will use fencing as an example. I believe that we have a flat fee for fence, regardless if you're putting 50 feet of fence in or 500 feet of fence. You know, so, so there's a situation where you would take a look at, you know, maybe it's better to charge as a percentage of the job or charge on a linear foot basis, as opposed to charging a flat, a flat fee for a permit for a fence. Council, I'd also like us to take a look at before next meeting is our 2015 holiday schedule. I know we scramble around at the, the end of each year and, you know, look at giving the day after Thanksgiving. I believe this year we did a half a day on New Year's Eve. So I'd like to take a look at the 2015 holiday schedule and make some decisions now so that we can update the website with all of the dates in which the borough offices will be closed and provide advanced notification to our residents that we need to adjust certain things, such as trash collection dates due to the holidays, so.
Yeah, Christmas day's on a Friday this year.
My, my recommendation would be is to take a look at the Delaware County Courthouse and mirror the dates that the Delaware County Courthouse is off, so.
Anybody else?
You can, you can look at. Okay.
Can we update the TV?
Sure.
I, a lot of the seniors watch the TV, and I know they were complaining about the trash collection because Friday it wasn't collected after Christmas, but yet Friday after New Year's it was collected. So they were a little confused with the trash.
That's because the employees had off the Friday after Christmas, but the Friday after New Year's they had work.
Seniors didn't have that.
And the last new item of discussion is I do want to do a review of all the council committees and citizens committees, just to make sure that, you know, that those who have, you know, volunteered for a citizen committee can still honor their commitment. If there's a need to make any adjustments, we would make those adjustments if necessary. And, Tim, did we advertise the dates for?
The meetings.
The meetings?
Yeah.
That's, that's already been done for the council meetings?
Yes.
Okay. And last year, did we advertise all the dates for the committee meetings as well, right?
We did, yes.
We did, yeah. Well, we did that afterwards, 'cause we did, um, council and then like zoning hearing upon request and then, uh, rec board is average. We already did that.
Okay.
But I think that's how we did it last year too. And then you came back to the committees are gonna be these kinds of, to put it all in at once, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just look, you know, I, I'll, we, we had dates for all the committee meetings. We'll just make sure that those dates work for everyone.
You know, the today's meeting wasn't in there.
Okay.
Counsel, any new items that you'd like to bring up or anything that has not been addressed that we may need to take action at the next week's meeting?
Will we be doing the reappointments at next meeting?
Reappointments for reorganization.
We typically, we typically...
Do we do that on an even year?
Reorganize only on an even year.
Well, then we have to do that every year.
If you look at the, um, Borough Code Book, then you'll see that, like, the state, the state rule, that you didn't have to spell the, the language in it.
We also had a resident that just turned a hundred New Year's Day. Mr. Mays on Thirteenth Street, she's still, still great. She's in a wheelchair, but she's still great. She just turned a hundred.
Yeah, I told Donnie, I talked to Donnie and, uh, so we should do a resolution for her.
Yeah.
'Cause I wanted to do one for Mrs. Dimitri, but Mrs. Dimitri had passed away before the actual little book, uh, got me the information. Mrs. Dimitri was a hundred and four when she died.
Wow. It was great. Everybody was there for her birthday. She's still pretty good, you know?
So if we could get, maybe Donnie can give us some information so we can do a resolution.
Absolutely.
What kind of information do you need then? Or, uh, Sean?
She turned a hundred on January first?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Who had her candles, had her goodie of chocolate. She was great.
Just her name, I guess, and maybe her date of birth.
Okay.
And so I can have Donnie come up and talk to you then?
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
We just maybe try to put it together like, uh...
Okay, I'll get it ready a little something.
Yeah, that they could be good for.
I'll get it to you this week.
Is she well enough to come to a meeting or?
Uh, it depends.
Depends?
Yeah, it does depend on her.
I don't think so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she gets, it's hard for her to get to the doctors. She's in a wheelchair as well. She's fragile, but mentally she's good, you know?
What's her name?
Josephine Remaze.
Josephine Mase?
Remaze, R.E.M.A.I.Z.E.
Okay, thanks.
She's a spitfire.
Yeah. Love her, Chuck.
Public forum.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, just a quick reminder, I have the, um, CDBG contract for...
Thank you.
For Mr., uh, Mr. Catania for the sidewalk improvement. Um, we need to, um, publicly accept the bid.
Okay.
Of the, or the lowest bid of the bidder. So I can, so we can, uh, I got them the draft contracts. Everything is done, but we need to have the meeting minutes sent to them to incorporate in the contract and it needs to be done, obviously.
Um, I'm gonna put that down as an action item for next week.
Also, we have, uh...
I remember what has been done in the past is, is we typically receive a letter from Catania Engineering that recommends the award of the contract to the responsible low bidder and then he names the bidder.
Yes, he had said that a long time ago, but I, I don't think we ever actually took action to accept the bid. I mean, I have a copy of the letter.
Tim, do you, you have a copy of the letter?
The borough would, would have copies of all those bids, right? Not just Mr. Catania?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there's actually a, they were, they have a public meeting and they're unsealed. So Tina and I sat in on that. Then Tina does the tabulations and then, uh, uh, you can almost get an idea about the, 'cause you see the prices.
Yeah.
But, yeah, then Mr. Catania makes it the formal recommendation. I, I'm trying to think when that, well, it was in this room, but it was, uh, a couple months ago. But every year it's done like that.
It was in October or September when he presented the, the letter. I don't remember and I don't appear to have it with me.
Okay. If you could just forward me a copy of it, that's why here I can get Tim to make sure it's part of the attachments for next week's agenda. And I've got it written down here for us to, uh, formally approve the, the low bidder for the, for the sidewalk project. Thank you very much for reminding me.
I, I also have, um, two ordinances. Um, one, one was old. It just never, um, I think I was out the month it was reset to ask that it be, um, permission for it to be advertised.
Okay.
That was for, um, for a public, the towing company to come in and seize ATVs that are being driven, um, instead of the police keeping them downstairs or ATVs and, uh, motorcycles, quad, those kind of things.
Okay.
The other one was maybe last month and that is for, um, the police rank ordinance needed to have the works juvenile aid officer removed and sergeant added.
Okay.
Um, I have, um, I can just send the drafts to you. That, that's just a one-word change. The numbers for these would be, uh, because Tim just had the one last week, the new number would be six forty-seven and six forty-eight for these. And, um, I could send you the drafts, but I just wanna, just need permission, uh, for the advertising to go forward on those two for next week's meeting.
So that's gonna be permission to advertise ordinance number six forty-seven, uh, which authorizes a tow company to, uh, seize and store, correct? That was the...
Yes, seize and store, uh...
The ATVs or motorcycles that are...
Better in violation of...
In violation of our borough code.
Yes.
And then six forty-eight would be, uh, the change in the police rank ordinance to add the word sergeant as opposed to the juvenile aid officer.
Yes.
Who is our towing company?
Delaware County Tow.
Do they, uh, uh, the, these, these are vehicles that are not licensed to be driven on the streets, that the people are driving on the streets anyway? When, when they...
Right, but probably more appropriate to say minibike as opposed to motorcycle.
Yeah.
We're talking about a non-licensed, non-registered.
Well, some, some motorcycles are for off-track, are for track use and not for on the road anyway. But, um, when they, is this a company that's empowered to go onto somebody's property and, and seize something that's not currently being used?
No. No.
I believe that the purpose of the ordinance would be is if, uh, somebody was riding a dirt bike that does not have a license plate or registration on the back on a public street, that individual is pulled over by the police officer. The way our ordinance reads now is, is that we store that motor vehicle downstairs. Um, you know, we don't have the facility to, to store, uh, a four-wheeler in the, in the office downstairs of the police department. So, you know, this is giving the authority of the tow company to come with the record, put it on the flatbed and store it, just like they would a, um, a car.
There's the garages.
They've seen the garages?
They got three bay doors down there.
Yeah. Every, every kid in the borough's gonna get a bike next year. That was a joke. Ms. Wilson, you had a public concern or a public forum issue?
I didn't, um...
That's okay, that's why we...
...up, but I, just in, um, talking about education toward the, um, recycling program, I was talking with, uh, Beth Gross about walking around right after Christmas, the first trash day after Christmas. And at this point, so many people get their Christmas presents by Amazon and everything comes in a box. And the first trash day after Christmas, the town was full of boxes out for the trash and the next day was recycling. If they'd held on to them another day, they could've gone and recycling. So I, you know, maybe when we're talking about education outreach, we can, we can remember to focus on, um, Christmas time 'cause that's a long time from now if they're writing up a proposal, but...
Oh, we could do that on the calendar, reminding them.
If we could just, you know, do a special note, notification of people that remember that a paper box, a cardboard box is completely recyclable and don't put it in the trash.
Schedule a recycle day for the day after Christmas. Call it Boxing Day.
Boxing Day.
What can eat, what can Canada?
The Canada.
No, you're absolutely right. And I kind of got away from, I used to do a recycling tip at every meeting and I got, I got away from it a little bit.
We miss those.
But I am, I am putting triple stars next to the recycle 'cause what I would like to do for next meeting is to actually do a year review, you know, where we were, uh, with all of the recycling in two thousand fourteen. And that's, that would be a good summary, uh, for preparation for, for next year's grant as well on our performance grant. Any, any other public comments? Uh, action items for the, uh, regular council meeting of next week? We'll, counsel, take action to accept the treasurer's report, the, uh, cash receipts and disbursements journal, uh, the code enforcement report. Uh, you can see if Dallas is available to, to present that report. Police report, Chief Macheski, if you, uh, could be prepared. Fire report, Andrew Camp...
I'll, I'll check though.
Fantrue can't be here, maybe the mayor can do it since he's a prominent member of the, of the fire department. Uh, we'll also take action to accept, uh, the chief's proposed work schedule for February of two thousand fifteen. Uh, hopefully we will be able to take action on acceptance of the consolidated collective bargaining agreement with, uh, between, uh, Eddie Stone Borough and the, uh, Eddie Stone Police Department Lodge Number Twenty-Seven. Uh, I do have one here. Uh, Mister Duffy is to take action on, um, approving the, uh, award of the contract to the low bidder for, uh, our sidewalk project, which is part of the two thousand fourteen Community Development Block Grant. Also giving you permission to advertise the ordinances. Uh, six forty-seven for the tow company to seize and store ATVs and minibikes and, and sh- non-road motorcycles. And the, uh, ordinance six forty-eight, which is the, uh, change in the police rank ordinance to add sergeant, uh, where it used to say juvenile aid officers. Counsel, any other items that we would need to take action on at next meeting?
I'm not sure if we need to take action on it, but we are starting our tutoring program. The high school is starting, um, third Wednesday of January, I believe, for six weeks. It's gonna be at Lighthouse Hall for one hour each Tuesday. I think it's two, Wednesday. I think it's a Wednesday. I told Sandra Rigby today and I have the date that I'm gonna meet her there next week. Show her where the room is that the kids will be using. I believe she said she's got six, uh, high school seniors that are coming.
They're part of the Leo Club?
I'm not sure the mentors, you mean?
Yeah.
I'm not, no, it's just gonna be something different.
Okay.
It's other kids. But, uh, Mister, uh, uh, Drazio is aware of it and he's getting the kids ready to be tutored. So, uh...
Is this, is this tutoring in a particular thing or is it just like an after-school help, homework help sort of thing?
It's, uh, tutoring after-school homework club, kinda.
Okay.
Our kids need help and it's, you know, we need to help them and this is...
That's great.
A way that the school district has, you know, offered to help us and we're gonna grab it. And we're starting off with one, one time a week and if it's successful, which I think it's gonna be, then hopefully we'll be able to expand on it.
Quick question, quick question on that, is I know it's going to a current Lighthouse Hall.
Yes.
Uh, I know that a lot of the curriculum is based on the, the iPad format. Are, are we gonna need to install, uh, internet potentially to, to Lighthouse Hall? And I know we have cable in there now, correct?
We used to have internet in there.
Yeah, we didn't really talk about it, but I know we did.
We do not have internet?
We used to.
We used to have internet.
Bonnie, um...
Butch Beck, Black. Butch Beck put it in there.
Ex-husband, uh, put it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where he had a bunch of computers all in there.
Right.
Computer lab.
Is that, is that Comcast or RCN?
Comcast.
Could you, could you look into it and see if there's, you know, what it would cost to have internet placed in there? And that's why here we're prepared of, and, and just let Linda Rigby know that, you know, if they need internet, we're, we're making provisions to have it turned on.
Hey, also, we need a key and I have a little, there's a little glitch. I have to be there the whole time, but I'm not gonna be able to be there to let them in. I told her I'll make sure somebody's there to let them in. I mean, they're targeting that night, Joey had that time.
Okay.
It's three fifteen to four fifteen. So it's like the exact time that I have to leave the borough, but...
When does that start, Josh?
I believe two Wednesdays.
Is it?
I believe it's the twentieth.
Is it, is it gonna be a daily thing or a weekly thing?
Weekly, once a week.
I, I could certainly help you with that.
Thank you, Glenn.
The twentieth is a Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday?
Yeah.
I've heard it down at home, but I'm gonna meet with her next week, show her the lighthouse and, you know, where the, the room is where the kids will be doing their homework or the tutoring. But I appreciate that. And I was gonna talk to Dave about it and he, since he's, you know, he's rough, he knows who could be up there, but having somebody volunteer to do that, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Good job, Des.
I'm really, really excited about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And as far as the internet down there, at one time when they first came in here, weren't they giving nonprofit people like the borough, the firehouse, bringing internet?
Yeah, they were.
We used to check into.
Especially for an after-school program.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we paid for it.
No, we paid for it when...
Maybe it was RCN.
I believe it was RCN that time too.
Was it RCN? No, we can find out, right?
Let's take a, we'll look at our franchise agreement too, 'cause it, it should, Mark said, like, usually they give you like three locations for public work.
They give you free drops for the franchise agreement.
Hey, to the media, I think, I think I didn't pay any.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
The firehouse has RCN down, but they refused to put the, uh, front line into the firehouse. They weren't charging about a hundred dollars.
Oh, jeez. That's crazy. Is that, the, the room that you have in, in Lighthouse Hall, is that like a room with tables?
Yes.
Is there gonna be like a closet or someplace where you could store materials?
Well, there is a closet, but I believe that the, the kids will be bringing their, you know, their books from school.
iPads.
They have iPads?
They all do.
They do.
Hey, my kid, his school district has a... Kindergarten too.
But I believe that tutoring's gonna be the older kids. It's not gonna be, you can never just start.
Right.
Right now, I think it's gonna be geared to the kids.
Something is better than nothing and that's a great start.
We wanna get our, we wanna get our...
Absolutely.
Scores up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Des and I had met with, uh, Linda Rigby. Before that, we had met with Lee Ann. And, you know, we wanted to know what we could do. It's not all about bingo and hot dogs. You know, what can we do to get these, these scores up? What's Grace Park doing that Eddie Stone's not doing, that their scores are better, you know? And...
And we care, we care the most about it too.
We do get, you know, the same thing. It's the same curriculums. But a lot of it isn't, you know, it's at home and...
Yeah.
Parents work, right, parents work and...
Yeah.
Our kids just need extra help, so, you know, we wanna give it to them.
Uh, upcoming public meetings and events, next Monday at seven o'clock is our regular council meeting. And, uh, I do promise that this week I will update the website, uh, to include all of our regular, uh, council meetings. Since they have been advertised, I will include all of the recreation board meetings since they have been advertised. And I will wait until we finalize the schedule, uh, for our committee meetings before I put those up. And, uh, also I'll wait till we finalize the, the holiday schedule, uh, before I actually list when the borough offices are gonna be closed for the year. But what I'd like to do, you know, at next meeting is to set the dates for, uh, all of the events that we have. I, I know it's on the website. It's the second Saturday of the month we do, or the second Saturday of December that we do the toy giveaway. You know, let's start thinking about when we're gonna do the Christmas tree lighting ceremony as opposed to a week before. Easter egg hunt, you know, really start getting those dates out early.
Need to check with the ladies auxiliary, find out if they're gonna do the night before Christmas again.
They will be, yeah, they, they have the Easter egg.
Yeah. We have a meeting this week, right?
Yes, Thursday night.
And so do they, so...
Yes.
General updates, we do have an executive session scheduled for six o'clock, uh, next Monday prior to our regular council meeting. And, uh, regular council meeting is immediately following at seven. And a reminder to councilwoman, uh, sure that you do have prayer.
It's up here.
It's up here?
It's up here.
It's not under the blotter anymore?
I think I know my heart. Nope, it's not here.
Roundtable.
I don't have any.
Councilwoman Thompson.
Nothing but the cheer.
Councilwoman Tanneshaw, nothing but the tutoring?
Nothing but the cheer.
Vice President Reese.
Happy New Year.
Councilman Patterson.
Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Gross.
Time to cut out the butter and go back to something else.
Mayor?
I'm good.
Chief Macheski, with a smile on his face because he knew that I was about to take action. Chief Macheski, and the white shirt gave away it's Chief Macheski.
Actually, uh, I actually have something I would like members of council to ponder, but, but first I'd like to thank everybody, uh, for appointment in two thousand fourteen. And, uh, we accomplished a lot in two thousand fourteen and I wanna make two thousand fifteen better. I started the review of our progress of two thousand fourteen, so I can give you guys an updated report and so I can project how our department's gonna run in the year two thousand fifteen and forth. One of the problems we ran in last year was our lack of part-time staff, because we hired from our part-time staff, but some part-time officers leaves and we had some injuries. Which created influx in our overtime. I would like council to consider, uh, hiring at least three more part-timers in the near future, so I can replenish our part-time pool and limit any overtime. Limit as much overtime as I can to keep us, uh, under budget. We're running pretty much the same as we did last year with pay raises, we really know we increase the budget, so we gotta keep a, a tight line on that. With at least three more part-timers, I discussed this with the mayor, it'll help us keep that line item down.
Who do we have from a part-time perspective now? I know it's Officer Desiderio.
Present, presently you have Officer Desiderio, he's doing a fine job.
Officer Signor, who's still in field training?
Officer Signor's still in field training. And then you have...
McCarthy?
McCarthy and Holmes.
Officer Holmes and how about Officer Kyler?
Agent Almond is both, excuse me.
Officer Kyler, I spoke to today, is expected to be medically cleared this week and as a precaution, I still wanna send him to our physician to be cleared. So that there are no problems with him coming back to work. Um, I, he would not need nearly as much training because he was an officer here and an FTO. He just needs to get back into how we do things here. So I, I would expect to have him, if he's cleared this weekend, you know, my doctor liked to have him start in February. So, we, we do have a need for part-timers.
I know, um, you know, and I, forgive me if I'm speaking out of school. Officer Desiderio and Officer Signor, you know, both committed that, you know, they will take as many hours as the, the borough would offer. So, you know, if a full-time officer goes on vacation, you know, we could fill that entire week's worth of shift and those guys are flexible enough to be able to do that. I don't think we have that same level of, and I don't wanna say commitment, but, um, you know, I know that Holmes, um, McCarthy and Kyler are gonna be limited in the amount of hours that they have because of commitments with other departments or commitments with, with other places of employment. Is that, is that a correct statement that...
That, that is correct. And I will say that, uh, also Desiderio is doing an average probably thirty-six hours a week for us. I expect Chris Signor to do the same. Uh, also, um, a status on Officer Elliott, he should be completing his K-9 training in the next four to five weeks and will have been back on steady patrol.
Okay.
Is there a limit on how many hours a person can work?
Well, if I...
Part-time police?
If I work a part-timer, I can work them up to thirty-six. If I work them over as overtime, I could end up with a grievance because I'm giving a part-timer overtime over a, a full-time officer.
Yeah, but isn't there a federal law that says that you have to offer, you can only work so many hours and after so many hours, it's, you have to offer health insurance and...
That's a Joe Passenti question, I believe. I know we discussed that about the public works employees, that, you know, that you, you cap them at about thirty hours. Uh, but I don't know if that same applies for emergency services personnel. So I, I think that's a Joe Passenti question and I could shoot him a note and get a clarification from him.
You still wanna get hung up on anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In terms of the part-timers, and, and just so that we're clear as a council on the procedures, is that we do not run the civil service process uh, for hiring of part-time officers. Uh, the requirement that we have for a part-time officer is that they are Act one twenty certified. Uh, we do not have any qualifications in terms of, you know, uh, s- hours of service, uh, elsewhere. Uh, if we were to, to hire for a full-time employee, the full-timer would have to have a thousand hours of service, uh, prior to being considered for full-time employment. Those rules don't apply, I believe, with the part-timers. It is just an Act one twenty certification.
Yeah, Act one twenty would be their, their credentials to apply for a police officer position, but council can set whatever restrictions they see fit.
What we've done in the past is it has been an interview with the chief of police and the mayor. Uh, and, uh, we have worked based on their recommendation. Uh, if we wanted to change that procedure in any way, you know, now's the time that we can kinda set, uh, the ground rules for, for hiring of part-time officers. What I'm thinking, you know, is just to have the mayor and the chief, uh, have that initial interaction with the candidate, uh, you know, vet those that, uh, they would like to, to move forward or, or would like to exclude them from further consideration. Uh, once they have a candidate that they would recommend, I'll have that candidate sit in front of the police committee. And, um, if the police committee, uh, would, would feel confident that, that there would be a, a good individual, allow the police committee to come forth with borough council and make that recommendation. Is that something that sounds acceptable? I know that Councilwoman Thompson wanted to have the opportunity to, to interview.
No, no, not interview. Meet them before we...
The appointment.
We appoint them, so we can put a face to a name. I mean, when they walk in, we're kinda looking around like, who, who are we?
Who's that?
Yeah. So just, and not even interview, because, you know, that's, that's the committee's responsibility, but to, to at least see who they are before, before we appoint them.
Mayor, chief, any recommendations on, on how to move forward with it? Does that sound...
No, that, that, that's fine. That, that's fair. You know, that's, that's fine.
And one of the reasons why I mentioned it early now is so that we structure and we are all moving on the same page pool. And it gives us time to start looking at new candidates upon your approval and start lining, uh, individuals up, because the training does take some time, especially if we hire a younger, newer officer.
You're looking at four to six weeks or six to eight weeks of, probably more closer to six to eight weeks of field training for a part-time officer, just because they're not putting the forty hours in.
That is correct. And also, it, it really depends on the individual. Some people get it really fast and other people just need a little more time. And we have to decide where we're willing to do more time with that person or why aren't, you know, everybody's, everybody's on an individual case.
You still only have one field training officer?
I have one, but Mike Mack is willing to, like, take the program and step up for Sergeant Mack.
Now, when Kyler comes back part-time, can you use him, even though he's part-time and he was a field trained officer?
That is something I have to work out. Well, I guess I could. I mean, he has the credentials, uh, but the problem is, when Lane's been working and who's the, the new part-timer gonna work with him? He's part-time and he's working sporadically a few hours a month. Uh, it's gonna take that person longer to get on the train versus a guy who's working forty hours a week.
Yeah, Ben's only working two, it's the same two steps along.
So they have to stay with that whoever they're field training with, they have to stay with that field training officer?
What we've done in the past is if, if a guy has a trouble coming in at a certain time, that we'd sign two field training officers to kinda also the guy's schedule so he can get his time in. The other thing that we do is if he's have, if he's not picking an upgrade, sometimes we feel that maybe that person in the FTO is not having a good connection. We'll reassign him to a different FTO and see if we get a better outcome from the training. There, there's different things we can do there. Make it work.
Good.
Just some for consideration.
So you'd like us to give you approval to begin the process of hiring part-time officers and you, are you comfortable with the number three?
I'm comfortable with number three and if, uh, we need to increase or decrease, I'll come back to council and give a recommendation.
Actually, we want the permission to start there, building that hire. We don't have the right to hire, but...
To interview, the right to interview for consideration for hire.
Right.
So you're reading the mayor's handbook over Christmas holidays? Anything else, chief?
No, that's all, thank you.
How many part-timers do we have now?
Oh, you're making...
Yeah, how many? Cause it's four.
We have, we have...
Five.
Five. We have, we have Officer Holmes.
Five.
Officer McCarthy. Officer Kyler.
Kyler.
Officer Signor, Officer Desiderio.
That's an old time that I've read.
But, but Officer Kyler has been out with an injury that's been suffered at, you know, his other place of employment. Uh, Signor is in training, so he's not on his own yet. Uh, McCarthy and Holmes have been limited hours.
That's a love we've got, right? Part-time.
Well, we hired Gleam and Golden, so they, they immediately come off of the part-time ranks and went full-time.
That's the first time in a long time we've been fully staffed.
They hired Gleam and, um, Golden, then Eddie Pizzani resigned and so Tom Burns, but they went to other departments.
And this is the first time in a long time that we've been fully sta- fully staffed.
And, and by building our part-time, the problems we had last year, we can kinda divert some of them. If we have an officer release or an officer gets sick, um, we can use the part-time pool to help supplement that. And we were kinda restricted last year as to how we could do that because of the number of officers that we had. So we had no choice. If you wanted to keep two officers on the street, we had to put the overtime down. We just didn't have the staff. And I don't wanna face that same problem this year. I'm trying to keep everything safe.
How many officers left in two thousand fourteen, Ed?
Uh, I'm gonna go off the top of my head and, and think. I think it was three. Officer Pizzani took a job with Ridley Township where he couldn't, uh, work any longer. Uh, Officer, um, Byrne wasn't working hours here and he actually got paid more to work Ridley Park, so he left for Ridley Park. Four. Um, Officer Gleam and Officer, uh, Golden were hired full-time. That took them out of the part-time pool.
Did we get exit interviews, any chance from the two that did leave? Just to see how they...
Before you, before you, before you go to the exit interview, Gary went to Upper Darby.
Yes.
Right.
And Sangmeister went back hometown to Glen Oldwell.
Right, that's four total.
But they're full-time officers that left.
Four, the four total from, that left, two part-time, two full-time. Right?
Yep.
Byrne was here. Byrne's got hired full-time somewhere.
I'm sorry.
No, he went to Ridley Park. He was, he, he was getting more hours and was being paid more money at Ridley Park. So he made the commitment that he was gonna stay, is that correct? Stay at Ridley Park. I didn't mean to step on you.
No, I thought he was done.
Exit interviews.
No, that's fine.
Uh, what, what I did was I did speak to each officer who was leaving, uh, read their, their resignation and, and had, like, sit down, talk with them as to, you know, if they were leaving. And the explanations I gave you were the explanations that were provided to me.
Do we have a written exit interview form for now?
No, we don't have a written exit interview form. Um, I do have their letters of resignation.
Would you like to develop an exit interview form?
I thought we already had one.
If we did, I was not aware that we had put onto...
Exit interviews were never done before we paid us.
I know, I remember you asking for them.
Chief, anything else? Mr. Duffy? Anything, sir?
Happy New Year.
I will get, I will make sure that I get the agenda out. You know, one thing that is something I do apologize. I put the agenda out to everybody and I always fail to include you, so it's always a surprise to you.
I, no, I always ask for it.
Before I forget, there's one other thing that next week at, uh, six o'clock, there was, uh, the community thing, you're supposed to be out here?
Yeah, it's the executive session.
Okay, it's not listed, that's why I said...
Executive session. No, it's, 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 it'll be, it'll be on the agenda for the executive session.
Discuss personnel litigation matters.
Oh, you're... So during executive session, we've got, uh, discuss personnel and litigation matters and we're also going to, council's going to have a presentation about the Riverfront Alliance Corporation. Just an introduction of what the Riverfront Alliance Corporation is all about, because I frankly don't know what the Riverfront Alliance Corporation's about. They just asked for an opportunity to address council, so I gave them fifteen, twenty minutes at six o'clock on...
Why would they do that? Why would they do that? Exactly how about the public...
I can do it publicly.
You would have to do it publicly because you can't do it executively.
Yeah, we'll have a minute seven. Dave, tell me about dodgeball.
We're still working on it. Um, I believe it's gonna be sometime this month. Um, I believe that it's gonna be Friday night.
What's the age group?
We're gonna have all age groups. We're even talking maybe...
That was what I was gonna ask, was if you could have an adult dodgeball.
We're, we're, we're gonna have all of it, so it covers everybody. We're gonna mess it up.
So we're gonna start offering a dodgeball program at the Lighthouse Hall sometime in January.
Correct.
We used to have an adult volleyball. Does anybody remember that?
Used to have it.
Do you remember him?
Out of rural family, something.
Yep.
Yeah.
God, we're old.
Speak for yourself.
That was a long time ago. That was fun, though.
I'll, I'll play that after I shoot your size. It's like this.
Dodgeball?
Yeah.
Do you play dodgeball?
Dodgeball.
Again.
Oh, no, no, I didn't know if you were on it, like a team or...
Are you a squad? Patches at the bowling?
Patches at the bowling. If you can touch after wrenching, dodgeball.
And my big thing in volleyball was being able to get down low and dig them out, but now I'll probably just be laying on the floor, waiting for the ball to hit.
He can catch, he can catch them.
Okay, Councilwoman Tadisher, I wanna thank you for spearheading the effort of getting a tutoring program, uh, up and running. I know when I sat in, uh, to the meeting that, uh, you and Councilwoman Reeves, uh, had with, um, Ms. Rigby, uh, that they, uh, also spoke about a, uh, potential of having a parenting class.
Yes.
In February, March, is that still...
We, she did not discuss that with me, so I'll talk to her more when I meet with her. Right now, I think the most important thing was to get the tutoring...
The tutoring up and running.
And that's what we're doing. So she didn't mention it and I didn't, but when I meet with her, I will.
Okay, 'cause I know that we made the commitment that, you know, she wanted to have the parenting class, which, you know, is essentially a class geared at, uh, educating the parents on the type of curriculum that is being taught at the school, because the way that you and I learn math is not the way that math is necessarily taught now.
Right.
You know, so it was, uh, making sure that, uh, you know, how to get the child motivated to, you know, get home and the excuse, I don't have no homework, doesn't exist. You know, there's always homework that is sent out, so, um, if we can continue the discussion with that, um, look at the, the parenting class. Dave, some of the things that, you know, I would like to challenge you with...
Sure.
Uh, with recreation is, is that, you know, we've, we've talked before, um, and then we've brought, you personally ran around, uh, crazy, uh, the week before Memorial Day, making sure the Memorial Day parade went off without a hitch. Um, you know, I'd like to begin to do a lot more pre-planning, uh, so...
Actually, Tommy and Mo Ryan's already on top of that.
He's on top of it?
We're on top of it. And I already have the fancies from last year already for this year and he's getting a hold of, uh, different firework companies and finding out.
Cause the, this is the year, I believe, that we do have the fireworks contract expired last year, so we would have to get a new firework contract in place...
Yep.
Uh, for Memorial Day. But with recreation, you know, what I would like to see happening with recreation is to expand the program beyond just intermural and, uh, league, uh, play for, for sports. Um, you know, to, to really challenge, uh, your, your folks that sit on the recreation board, uh, to do more things such as spin-off and, and get the mentoring program or the tutoring program for the children up and running. Um, you know, if we do a parenting class, you know, that that parenting class is kind of done in conjunction with, with the, the efforts that you do for, for recreation. Uh, I'd also like to see us do, um, some, some, some things for the seniors.
We're already in the process of going over things with, um, Mrs. Rolls for senior things. It would be fun, soup and sandwiches.
Soup and sandwiches, some bingo nights and, you know, and I'd also like to see us kind of, you know, maybe do a dance or two.
Senior, senior group.
That's fine. And the, uh, dodgeball is not only gonna be, this year it's just gonna be in-house, next year we'll try and make competition to other municipalities. We just wanna get a handle on, uh, roughing and things like that with the dodgeball.
The injury scale.
Also, a friend of mine's getting me a, um, gonna get me a price on, um, a string bear.
Okay.
Very sorry.
All right.
Upstream bear.
So I do wish everybody a very happy new year and, uh, I look forward... So I do wish everybody a very happy new year and, uh, I look forward to accomplishing a lot of things in two thousand fifteen. So may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So order and order.
Meeting adjourned.